He said, oh, yes. I kept it in the blue box. I kept it about nine months. She owns a trade that's been living life. But I saw that she was just keeping her.
Good deal with that.
How are you?
Oh, yeah.
There are no women.
They're trying to get this approved. We're not going to call it a single.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to come up with a venture. I enjoy reading. You know, there's a lot of bad journals out there. You've been in the national press. Although I...
Yeah.
I think Tom Friedman spoke about it. And I really enjoyed that. All my interests are concerned. I enjoy it. He's great.
See you.
Oh, okay. Hey.
Hey.
They're quoting here. The notification because it's on Mary. Did I say that? Did I say that? That had to do with conditional use.
You know, our little room.
I just...
Yeah. Actually, I was like, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
It's like a little sweet, but it's really something we drop it out.
It's good for a long night. I mean, it's a public meeting.
But there's the whole thing from the whole action.
Does everybody have a copy of the draft?
Yes.
Follow along if you want.
We need to actually make sure that our program... The girl who has... Communication.
Yeah, well, it's just...
No, yeah, that's cool. Following you and up and home. Maybe I'll take that in part.
It's great.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right. Um, we'll go ahead and get started at four o'clock. Hopefully, this won't take too terribly long. Maybe thirty minutes, maybe forty minutes. We'll stay here as long as we can until we're... Until, just to make sure we're not late for our regular meeting at five. Um, this, we've been talking about this for a good while. We met on this previously. Uh, the staff has deliberated a good bit. Um, you know, the analogy that I like to draw with this is those of you that were on the commission or were following city events back in two thousand fifteen when we were kind of getting into the final stages of the downtown master plan. We sort of had the private dormitory conundrums that we needed to deal with and regulate that use more appropriately than just any other type of multifamily offering. And so regulations were developed for that and codified as part of the downtown master plan implementation, which went into effect in March of two thousand sixteen. I think that those regulations have served us well as far as future student housing being more appropriately located. Um, and that is largely what we've seen and what we're getting with those new regulations is that's where all of our new applications are largely coming in, which is that urban neighborhood on the west side of downtown. So, fast forward a couple of years, and we started to see this new student housing type that we termed academic attached dwelling unit. And it is a single unit. Probably the prototypical type that we see is a five bedroom, five bath. And we're seeing those come in with increasing frequency. The media attention on that, on the neighborhood in that Fraser Canton area where we've seen a lot of these come in has been fairly prolific and consistent. There was a, obviously, there was a very large piece that was written in. A plainsman spoke to this issue to some extent, and it's been, you know, covered fairly, fairly widely with our media outlets. We've been working on it for some time. We think it's ready to go. Um, I know my dad brought up the tail end of our packet meeting on Monday, the desire to talk about it a little bit more. So, uh, the reason we're meeting on such short notice is because I, I personally and professionally feel it's fairly urgent if these regulations move forward and into place. If they need to be adjusted, so be it. If they need to be revisited down the road, so be it. We do that all the time, but I think what we can't afford to do is nothing or to delay this any further than it's taken us to get to this point. So with that, you have a copy of the ordinance. You have, um, some strikeout and underlining. Uh, I had sent out an email a few weeks ago just covering a few things, and you have that information. But again, this is, the format for this meeting is, is just like it is a packet. This is a discussion between the, the, uh, the commission members and the staff. Uh, we appreciate those of you that have come to show up and listen. And I hope that you come into this meeting is that the staff has your direction to go ahead and advertise this for a public hearing on January tenth, which will be the next regular meeting. The reason why the meeting today was critical is because we actually would have to write the ad for this regulation tomorrow. We would have to go to the paper on Monday, and it would have to be published in a week from today to meet legal advertising requirements for January tenth. So, we're literally down to the last minutes here. Not to put any pressure on the commission, but I hope that you've had a chance, and I believe you had a chance, to look at this for quite some time. But I stand ready, and so does the staff to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. The reason for the adjustment in FAR is for the new parking apartments? Do you see them?
Um, it...
That's a question.
Well, it, no, because the, the parking is really an ISR issue.
Okay.
The floor area ratio, the thinking there was that, given the fact that these were going to be permitted in our urban neighborhood districts, which are the districts that immediately surround downtown, and if we truly, if we truly believe what we say, that we want to encourage and incentivize infill redevelopment, it seemed to be, if we're going to permit these academic attached dwelling units, we know that they're larger than the typical single family offering, and therefore, why not give them a little more FAR to work with? That was, that was the intent. If we're going to permit by right, if we think we have the development standards in place, that these can be compatible in the urban neighborhood districts, and I believe we do already, I believe much of the background, most of the background is labeled codified the downtown master plan. And the new urban neighborhood districts are very, very explicit with very specific development standards that we didn't have previously in the university service district.
Okay.
Of course, I have kind of a question that may or may not make sense to you, but is it, is assumed, which is assumed to be more restrictive? Uh, four hundred individuals or five? What would be more restrictive? Yeah, four. So, so this is to encourage, is what you said earlier, right? I mean...
Well, this is, depending on who you talk to, and this is why this regulation, I think, is so difficult, is you have some very strong feelings and opinions on both sides of the spectrum and what this ordinance attempts to do. And I think if you ask the development community, and we have some of those folks, they would say this is onerous and restrictive. I've even had one person say, well, you must not even want academic attached dwelling units at all if you want to codify it this way.
Well, of course, I heard that about our short-term rule, or that's early this week by somebody else. But what was the reason?
I think they believe it's too restrictive as far as the districts that it's proposed to be permitted by right, which is, which in the current draft is exclusively permitted by right in the urban neighborhoods.
And that's all?
By right. There are other districts that would require conditional uses, which, which would mean we would get an opportunity to analyze these. And quite frankly, with the experience we've had with some of these and where we've had them, I think that's absolutely the way we need to go. I think making it permitted by right in R D D, for example, would be a great mistake.
Back to the issue of parking for a moment.
Yes.
Yes. Um, most of these are going to be areas where there's very little on-street parking. So that means that the requirement of one's bedrooms, one foot space per bedroom will maximize the, the little parking that exists and leave no room for any guest or a second vehicle if one of the residents has one. And these are all basically commercial. It seems to me this is the opportunity to try to add like one point two spaces per bedroom, which would mean these units would have six parking space. Now, I realize it's a cost for the developers.
Right. You know, we, we do have one point one in our typical, you know, multifamily offerings, apartment complex and all, so there's basically, that's sort of a ten percent for, um, add-on for, like you said, yes, situations and things like that. And that's...
I think Bob makes a good point, though, because then you're...
It's free, that's up to y'all. I thought I, I was, I felt the one per bed was sufficient, given the size and scale of these things, but, um...
Well, I think the point is that they're going to have parties and guests, and we don't want parking in the yards and so forth.
On the road.
I would love my own party at your house. I'd come to a party at your house and park, have a car on the road.
Sure.
I'm sorry?
If I had, if I can't, you told me that if they have parties, they park on the road. Well, if I come to your house for a party, I'd probably have a car on the road.
And I think that is temporary. No, it's if you live here.
If, if there's, if there's roadside parking, because some of, some of these streets are fairly narrow.
Some of these streets have no on-street parking.
My point is, we've really talked about trying to limit parking in yards and all those kinds of things that are outside of, I think that's, I think that's the point, too.
Well, the sort of more permanent residency, I agree with getting all the people who live there full-time off of the street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not arguing.
Because if there's visitors, that's more temporary than, than not. Right now, we only require two, and three of the people who live there permanently have to park, find a place to park.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not arguing against what we've got. I'm saying, should it be more strict, which is what Bob was suggesting. Because Elvin wouldn't like it, of course, but, but again, I mean, we are talking about the kind of physical nature of it.
One point, one, one point one wouldn't force to require them to end up having the six space. One point two would.
One point one, I think, if you have five and a half, you have to be like that.
Around.
It would round it up and be five and a half.
Yeah, we round it up.
Well, if that's not enough.
Yes.
Well, at the very least, I think we should, and then I would recommend we do one point one, which would add the six space. And I think alleviate a lot of problems over this going forward.
I think it's usually rented by their own or with one lease.
Well, uh... Yeah, it does depend. I, I happen to have a query made of me that caused me to call the property management company of, of, uh, of these. And the way I understood it is essentially, they quote the rental rate, so if I call and I'm a student, they quote the rental rate to me basically on, on the basis, but it's actually legally a single lease agreement for the entire unit.
But there could be...
That was just one particular development that I called the property. I mean, the, the different variations of how that's done, I couldn't begin to guess, but that was, that was what I was told by the property management company for one of these, uh, developments. So I'm hearing one point one.
That's insensible.
So we can reflect that change and advertise as such.
One point one.
One point one is, that's right. That's kind of how we deal with, that's what we require for typical multifamily, sort of, other complex and having...
Can you put the matrix, the use matrix up there? You have that in there?
Yeah, sure. Why parking spaces don't make a lot, but it's gonna make some, though. If, if they rent them to individuals, which, which renter gets the extra parking space first on first serve, I guess, but...
Well, I, I, that may be the case, but also, almost everybody has one car, at least presently, maybe. Ten years from now, maybe a different story. But right now, every, these students are coming from out of town, they bring everything to one car. So, so there's five for sure. And, and my thinking is, is there's going to be guests, there's going to be somebody coming in from out of town with a six vehicle, and there's no on-street parking in a lot of these.
Point is, it will, will one extra parking space solve the problem?
No, it won't solve it, but it will help it.
Thank you, though. Well, it's one, one space that doesn't have to park on the street or in the yard. Well, I, I, I was thinking, we could require more, because that's always a tough thing because we also want to be green, but to be practical, you'd almost have, I just don't park on the street.
No, I think, I think, I think most of the developers, and certainly the smart developers, understand that, um, well, a lot of these that would probably be called ADDUs if we had these regulations in place prior to now, a lot of these folks are already providing what we're recommending, because they know that. They know that they're renting them to students, they know that every student has a car, they know that most of the students are coming from out of town, and so they're providing off-street parking without being required to do it by ordinance currently, because right now, they only have to provide two because they...
And those that have been approved are approved at one per bedroom, or should more?
No, I'm, I'm saying there are, there are residents...
But we have a couple that are, have been approved. Gay and Drake, did it have one or one point one?
Oh, they, they, yeah, they, they, I think they were meeting their, they, they would meet these parking requirements if they were regulated as this.
Okay.
Meaning they want one.
Well, that's one for, one for bedroom, but it wouldn't mean that one more for bedroom.
I think he's, I think he had some access.
I think he did, too. Just because of the level of property.
Yeah, I know we looked at that, because that's what we said, hey, if this was an ADDU, what regulations would they meet and what wouldn't they meet?
I'd be the favorite one, Paul, on that question.
All right? I've got that now. Um, what else?
If you had, they need a higher ISR level.
Well, what typically happens with our development standards is you, you're never going to, there's always going to be one of these criteria, like, for example, it's going to be difficult, the minimum lot size, I don't, I mean, you're not going to see a whole lot of five thousand square foot lots, I think, in order for them to actually accommodate what they want to build and any, all the other requirements. So these are all obviously minimum requirements, but some of these requirements are going to, are going to have to be exceeded in order to get what they're trying to locate on the property.
Does, does this ordinance have any meaning that we're allowed to hide, so we don't have any more like those on, what is it, uh, parallel to, to Gay Street and the street, uh, east?
Armstrong.
Armstrong, yeah.
Well, we've got the, we've got the urban neighborhood, uh, height requirements. And if you're down in the south, it's, it's forty-five, but it's thirty-five if you're adjacent to a single-family residence.
I, I just think, I don't know, those Armstrong ones are not adjacent, but they're out of scale or four. That's true. I think, yeah, there's a problem. So there's nothing here that would put that one.
Other than it's still technically a single-family dwelling, which has a maximum.
The challenge is, there could be a multi-unit development next door that's allowed by right, I believe, in urban neighborhoods, south in that vicinity. It could be that tall exactly. So, for its type, I think that's what you're asking.
Could be up to seventy-five foot tall.
Right, and what you get is the notion that we can go ahead and build our forty-five foot tall, I, I call it, uh, you know, old motel six style outside hallway, I'm not saying somebody would, but that, that is, that is a comment that we get. If I can build this, you know, so it's, because the, the ordinance says that all heights are the same on those type of uses.
I'd, I'd be the favorite one, the one, the one, the, uh, well, the height, the way is thirty-five, too. Just because they are, and many of these are in neighborhoods, you know, and so... So I only, one voice.
My request is, you could spend a month or two on one of them.
I mean, you can see what the fourth factor does on Armstrong, as opposed to what's on Santa, which is probably more like thirty-five.
But isn't that going to push the occupancy up a lot? I mean, when we get, it's going to be out of this, this, uh, limiting it to five in this particular type of, of product.
Well, what, what's the actually goes on, on Armstrong?
Oh, they're not boarding houses, so it should be five.
They're, they're definitely a part of, like...
I should, I would think it's five.
I just, I don't know. I can, I can pull, find, I can pull plans. I think you can assume they max out what they were allowed to do, and I think that's a safe assumption.
Aren't those multi-unit developments, not like apartments where they have multiple floors in each apartment? It's not a, it's not this type of product, is it? It is this?
It's this, I think.
I think so.
Two units, one in front of the other. I'll check.
All right, are you comfortable with your definition, that we can legally defend it?
Yeah, I am. It's, uh, it's very, like I said, it's, I always kind of draw this analogy, it's a single unit equivalent of what we dealt with on private dorms, except for a lot of the same, a lot of the same language, a lot of the same criteria that have been employed here.
Now, it's known that the words, you know, are not, may not have any extra bedroom.
Right.
They're typically smaller.
That's right.
Oh, and very similar to the private dorm definition.
So that would be reviewed by you?
Well, that's part of this proposal, is that we'll start reviewing floor plans. Um, we'll actually have a formal requirement that the planning department will review floor plans. That's how, that's in large part how these use determinations get made.
Can you distinguish between the, uh, academic attached dwelling unit and boarding house?
Well, you see, we've also recommended some adjustments to the boarding house, um, requirements. I've never actually had, we've had some conversations about this. I've never actually dealt with anyone wanting to establish a boarding house at all. You know, definitionally, it's designed to be somewhat a little more transient in nature, you know, meals may, may be served. You've got a, typically got someone who's running the boarding house and residing on premise and, you know, providing those services to the folks that are renting rooms from them essentially, so it's a little bit of a different arrangement.
And we're, so we're suggesting that we can only have it conditionally in three, three areas. U N south, R D D and C R D south.
Right. You've got, it's recommended to be conditional in C R D U and C R D S, conditional in R D D permitted by right in our three urban neighborhood districts.
Let's see if I can do that. Okay, okay, that's, that's, well, no, I'm talking about the boarding house. There's only three different places we're talking about boarding houses.
Yes, that's right.
It's all, it's all conditional.
That is correct.
Okay, and so by right, we've got academic attached dwelling units by right in three spaces, three of the areas, U N east, U N west, U N south. There's the most conditional, okay?
Of course, the ones on Armstrong were permitted as a private dormitory. Not a single-family house. There's more, there's a lot of bedrooms, fourteen bedrooms.
Per unit?
No, it's a...
Oh.
There's three units.
Two units.
So seven. Seven bedrooms. So you're talking about that place in Black Hills, Monica's side.
Or so. Yeah, three or four point one. That's right.
Yeah, I'm talking about that, one's down near, near Sanford.
I can see. East and down in...
Yeah, that, that was the substance of a lot of discussion when we were working on the northwest all of the neighborhood plan. But, yeah, in three oh four one three, um, that's, the, the C R D W there, that was created as part of the, part of that planning process. And so there was, that was a little bit of a, of a nuance where there was a line drawn. Um, you know, we, we, one of the major things we heard from, from the neighborhood in doing that plan was student housing intrusion and neighborhood preservation. So, and as a result of that, you know, once you get off, get back off of Martin Luther King and Bragg, it's predominantly neighborhood conservation, so none of that area was touched. And then we provided some opportunities for some mixed use and hopefully some additional neighborhood commercial uses over time along Martin Luther King. Um, what we did hear from, were a lot of folks on the east side in particular, bracket ridge subdivisions are probably a good example of that, where a lot of people made investment decisions, purchase decisions based on the ability to, to rent to students, quite frankly. And, um, we felt like the, the fact that we've had this, this unrelated occupancy of five, no more than five unrelateds and, and the student renting zones, for lack of better nomenclature, um, it just seemed like it would be a fairly aggressive move that might be just somewhat unwealed and difficult to enforce. And obviously, we, we had quite a bit of opposition expressed vocally to that, basically, you know, the city's changing the game on us, things like that. So we just, you know, we just decided, in the best interest, just leave it at five. And then develop the regulations accordingly.
I think the biggest, most significant contribution, this makes, hopefully, solve a problem, a mitigating a problem, is making these type uses conditional in any of these controversial areas. So they're going to be individualized, reviewed.
That's right. The, the R D D zone has been, um, you know, somewhat, somewhat problematic for us, and you know, if you, if you've noticed as we've gone and done some of these focus area plans, we've tried to tailor make districts that are, I think, more sensitive to the areas that they're proposed to locate in. And when we've done that, we've actually, we've actually eliminated a lot of R D D through that, through that subject process. But, but when you've got a plan, you know, like I said, our plan is working, but what that means is you've got more and more people that are focusing their attention on these infill redevelopment areas, and those are going to be the areas that are most sensitive because they've got development surrounding them. And so, while we're getting what we want, we are getting the increasing, I think we're experiencing increasing number of challenges because of the fact that you go out and develop greenfields, there's nobody around that's impacted. It just better be that you're saying going on now, and everybody's impacted. And so a lot of, you know, a lot of, well, for what I'll just call attention is what it is. You know, a lot, a lot of the tension and a lot of the, um, unpleasant public meetings have a lot to do with that, that tension.
Which brings into one of the majors of having conditional uses, is that they are not referenda. When we're having to consider conditional use, the temptation is to yield to political sign of the process and make a decision based on, rather than the facts before us, on the, on the circumstances we find in the green, which is very, but it's, it's not a... But on the other hand, going back to my issue, if, if you have conditional use on one of these five units, you could actually limit the height there.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the policy, I think. You could literally eliminate the competition.
Anything else jump out at you?
No, I assume that this is long there, that would be better.
Oh, no, I think so. I mean, I, I think, I think if you hadn't gotten a private dorm, used codified nearly three years ago, I think we'd have some problems now. I think the same here. If we don't do something now, I think three years from now, we'll look back and we'll be sorry.
Already have some problems.
Back to more of, talk about the definition, but that is a, it sounds, it's more like a, a comparison of general information to tell you what the difference has opposed to regulars are. How you, how you regulate a plan that comes in with reference to typically larger or smaller bedrooms? Does it require it to be smaller, or is it just a...
Well, it's a number of different things. That's why reviewing the floor plans is so critical to it, and that's what we do with our decision-making now on what constitutes a private dorm, like maybe just, some people thought that thing was a single, like, family house. The floor plans were reviewed, and it was... The floor plans were reviewed, and it seemed to be a private dorm, and it was regulated as such. So this would enable us to do the same thing. We spent a lot of time, like I said, a lot of this was borrowed from a lot of the work that was done back when those private dorm regs were developed, and a lot of the tutorials and education sessions that we had with the planning commission at that time, sort of explaining, you know, this in itself doesn't make it a private dorm, but this, and this, and this does. And that's kind of how it works.
We're talking about one floor and one parking space per unit.
I've got that down.
They rounded it up. So does this mean that what has been built before this is put in is all non-conforming? And that if it is any kind of replacement in the future, it has to be, you know, put into a conforming configuration?
Well, we, we have- There are a lot of things that have been built that if these regulations had been in place, would have been classified as ADDUs. So if, if, well, something that was permitted as a single family, but meets all the requirements of an ADDU, if that house burns, if it burns down, and this is in place, and they want to do it again, it's probably going to come in as an ADDU, and it's going to have to meet all the requirements for ADDU.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Now, the, the units that we approved as single-family, knowing there were going to be these up on North Gay last month, if they have the, they meant these mostly, did they meet them completely? Did they have the, what, you were only applying the one bedroom, I mean, one parking space?
I will, I'll confirm all this with you. I, I know we checked the parking, and I believe they actually exceeded even what this would be.
I think the intent was to definitely have-
I can't tell you that I looked at those particular units and went through a full evaluation to see if they were or weren't ADDUs, because it's, it's not an issue until it's in effect.
And that was in, that's RDD, huh?
That's actually CRD, U. That was part of the renewable, like, road changes.
The, the good news about that project for me at least, is I think it's going to provide a good model for how you might do this, because they have quite a big room space, and they have a large, you know, part of property there, of course, but, I do think that's a positive, it's going to have it down. And their bedrooms were not small, I mean, they were, they were by size, they were oversized.
I like silence. Is there anything else? Everybody okay with this?
I think we're good with this now.
Okay.
I think we need to move forward and meet as possible.
You had to come out of that meeting, or this meeting, so we will, we may note the parking adjustment, and we will proceed to prepare the ad, and that, this will be before you. I mentioned to you that we're going to schedule another, this isn't set and set up, obviously, because it depends on your availability or not, but it was requested that we do a follow-up session on Harper Avenue before we schedule that, and I think we were looking at January eighth, which would be a fairly typical meeting date and time for you. We typically try to do them on council meetings, Tuesdays before the council meeting, generally before the states or Alabama long in case to, to knock it out. So if you wouldn't mind checking your calendar and seeing if you can make that date for Harper Avenue, and get back to me, once I hear back from the majority of you if you can, then we'll go ahead and schedule that. Eight, I'm sorry? Eight, work, okay. That would be great. And then that would, that would put us in a position of getting that study in front of you, and then we'll take it.
Four, four P M.
Four P M, right here, four P M, right here, January.
You want to get to Glendale.
That'll, that'll be next in queue. That's, that'll be coming at you next. We want to get Harper Avenue put to bed, get this put to bed, you've got the PDD amendment related determination of PDDs that we talked about. I'm going to get that on for you for January. Now, we'll have the ADDUs coming, January, we'll have Harper Avenue coming to you in February, after meeting in January, and then probably get to Glendale in front of you in February. So we're in pretty good shape as far as all that goes. And I think that's it. Unless anybody has anything else. Thanks, audience, for coming. We'll know what to expect now, come January tenth, as far as what will be before the planning commission. And we'll get started across the way at, at five o'clock for our regular meeting.